Okay, good evening. So my name is Jeff Gerber with Architectural Farm PGA L. And I'm here with two of my colleagues, Justine and Emily. And we're going to help administer through this town hall meeting tonight. So thank you for coming. This meeting is really important to us as the architect to better understand what you guys want in this project. And we're going to use the information that you provided tonight, add that to the information about what the existing programs that you offer. And I know that the city has done previous surveys about what other offerings that you wanted to have that maybe still aren't being provided now. So we're going to want to take that information. And what we're going to do with this information is, right now, we have an allocation of square footage for the library, senior center, community center of about 21,000 square feet. But we haven't decided what that consists of. So the information that you're going to provide to us tonight is going to help us decide what the spaces are, how many there are, and how big they are. So that we can prioritize the kind of space that will offer the kinds of programs that are most interested for you as citizens. And so that's what our goal is today, is to get some real-time feedback. And so what you should have, as you came in, there should have been a sign-up sheet. And you should have one of these surveys, a pen, at the front door. If you don't have one of those, well, your Asian hand, and we'll get one brought to you. But it's about a six or seven-page document. Can we?
Can you take a minute and introduce yourself and tell us about the architecture?
Sure, sure. So my name is Jeff Gerber. I'm the CEO of PGA L. We're a Houston-based company. We've been here for 76 years. Our farm is one of the largest ones in Houston. And we do a lot of municipal work all over Texas, actually all over the country, but particularly in Texas. We've been personally working here at West U for over 20 years, working with you on various projects, working all over this community with cities. Almost every city you can name, I've done a project over my 40-year career doing municipal work. Okay, so again, anyone that doesn't have one of these surveys or a pen, please raise your hand. So we're going to hand out some comment cards here right now. And we're going to decide, we'll help each of you, how we're going to, at the end of the meeting, get questions. We're going to ask you to write them down. I'll get to that in one second. So what we want to do is, if you have a question or a comment that you want us to try to address in this meeting, if you can write it down. We will collect those, and then we'll, after you get through with the survey, then we'll go through those, and we'll go through them and answer the questions as best we can. So the question was, where is the project being contemplated? The master plan that was approved by council contemplated this to be over on the site where the existing public works administration building is, and where the outbuildings are over by the water tanks. Okay, so like I said, so these comment cards, we fill them out throughout the course of the meeting. We'll collect them at the end, and then we'll go through them one at a time. We'll do our best to answer questions that you have about what we're trying to do tonight. But again, for those who are coming in, what we're trying to gather is, what are the programs that this building should offer? When I mean programs, it means like yoga class, or a exercise class, or lectures, or other kinds of activities. So that we can understand what kinds of uses that are most interested of the users. And then what we're going to do with that information is, we're going to translate that into, if there's a lot of desire for multiple classroom spaces, that's going to tell us that we have to have more than one classroom space. It'll tell us how big the spaces need to be to be able to accommodate the desire that we gather based on the interest from these surveys. And it also tells us what you might not be interested in. And I think that having done these kind of projects for many decades, what tends to happen is that the programs that are offered by different cities are dictated by the facilities that they have. And that's probably true with West U as well, that your programs are identified by the kinds of spaces that you have, and how many of them you have. And your team that's been doing your program has been doing a great job trying to maximize the use of those facilities and offer programs that the facilities can support. What we want to do is, rather than make the facility dictate what the kind of programs you give, we want to understand what the kind of programs you want. And then we'll design a facility that accommodates the programs, which is the right way to do it. And so that way, we can have a scenario where the building really reflects the kinds of spaces and the kinds of activities that make the most sense for West U. Okay, so we're going to walk you through just how, what we want out of the survey. And I'm going to just kind of go through the beginnings of this, and then I'm going to turn it over to Justine to kind of walk you through the details of it. But we tried to make this easy and simple for you to be able to navigate, so it's really checking boxes. So the first part of the survey is really, we just want to understand what part of the city you live in. So you've probably seen this map before. This is, I think, your waste recycling zone. So we just want you to identify what zone your house is in. So I don't know what we're going to do with that, but it just might be interesting to see where people are coming from and how they're accessing the facility. And then we want to know how many people are in your household. And I know there's multiple people from the same household. And please fill out multiple forms for each person that's here, because a husband might have a different desire for programs than a wife does, right? That would be very common. And so we want to make sure that we hear all voices that are here and make sure that all of that information gets included in what we want. If you can turn to the next slide. And so the other thing that we want is, you know, how many members are in your household? So if you live by yourself, or you and your spouse, or you have four kids, or whatever it is, that's what we want, a pretty simple answer. And then how many of your household are children? And really, what we're trying to understand with that is that if we have a lot of respondents tonight that have no children in the home, that's going to tell us that we have more of a senior response to the survey. And maybe the library doesn't have as much of the information that we need, and we need to seek it out a different way. So really, that's what we're really trying to get at, is trying to understand the dynamics of the group that is answering the questions. So I'm going to turn this now over to Justine to talk about the details of the survey. And, go ahead, Justine.
All right. So I see that a lot of people have already started filling out the surveys, which is great. So I'm just going to run through an overview. Can you all hear me okay? Okay, I'm just going to run through an overview on how the survey is organized. So at the top, the blue, I believe you guys have black and white, but you'll see community center or community building, senior center. This survey is broken up into two parts. The first part is that building, and then the second part toward the end is the library, which I'll get to in a minute. But just so you know, as I'm answering these questions, these questions just relate to whatever's listed up there. So these questions would just be for the community building, senior center. And then the overall general topic of these questions are related to health and fitness. So the first part of the question is, what type of health and fitness activities that are currently offered? Do you participate in? And about how frequently do you participate in those? It doesn't have to be a perfect science, but we can just get a rough idea, if it's frequently, sometimes, or rarely at all. And this can be for you or any member of your household, like Jeff was saying, so we can get accurate data. And then the second part of the question is, if there's any activities relating to this topic, health and fitness, that you would like to see in this building, the community center, or community building, senior center, listed here? And then how often do you envision yourself using it? So if you go through the survey, these questions, again, you'll see, community building, senior center, relating to learning and cultural activities. So as you go through the list, it kind of gets your mind in what kind of activities relating to that topic can you envision yourself in? To keep us a little organized. Arts and crafts, hobbies, games. And if there isn't a topic on here, just feel free to write it in that spot, so you can get an idea. Social. Oh, that's a, that is a good point. So if there's, if you don't participate in it, so this is just health and fitness activities at the community building or senior center. So you have your senior, it's just, are you using it at the facility? And if you don't select anything, we're just going to assume that you don't utilize it.
Correct. This is, we're talking about things that are happening in this building. Correct, not the rec center facility, but things that are happening on this campus.
Just the community building, senior center. So as you.
Hold on a second, Justine. So again, it may be that, it's just a.
Just cross it out.
I understand. Then just leave it blank, and we'll deal with it down.
I guess just the level, personally, like I always thought it's more for seniors than for like what? And definitely for a lot of people, a lot of people in the community that are younger, they might not know this is actually a lot of the areas, but also for young.
For sure. I mean, we'd like you to do this on your leap, on your walking out, there's a white box on the table. If you just put it in the white box, and we'll start analyzing the information that we have from there. Okay, so we got lots of questions and comments. And if you need follow-up questions, then raise your hand, and someone will bring you another comment card, and we'll work our way through it like that. So there are questions that aren't related to the programs for the senior center, so we're not going to address those tonight. Those will be another town hall, if we can bring those questions to that meeting. But there are several that are related to the programs of what we're talking about tonight. So I'll go through those, and these are in random order, some of which are questions and some of which are just comments. So there, the first one is, there are a lot of programs that I would like to do, like pickleball, but just have not signed up for just yet. I do watercolor painting on Fridays, which I love. Another, next one is, more than one indoor pickleball court, a dog park? The next one is, please check out what kind of activities offered in communities in us now designated in blue zones. So populations with seniors. So for those that don't know what the blue zones are, that those are a concept about having healthy seniors and healthy activities that are promoted by communities to diet and exercise, and how seniors live longer. And that whole blue zone concept is, there's a lot of facilities that are focused on trying to adopt some of those practices. The next one is, does the community, the community building refer to just voting, town halls, and tax prep? I don't think there are any youth or teen programs here. In other words, is the senior center the main purpose of the building from a programming, as far as programming is concerned? So again, I think that we are, we are trying to gather information about what the community wants to have programs for this project. And then obviously, we'll have to go through that and figure out which ones are the right ones to go forward with. The next one is, the least expensive and most practically to add a second floor is now? Are you planning a second floor? Or, or I think, meaning, I think it means, are you creating a scenario where it could accommodate a second floor in the future? I think is the flavor of this comment. I can't read every word. It would be useful just to support an additional pickleball, or I think volleyball courts. And then second comment is, planned for informal gathering spaces as well? The next question, the next comment is, how many square feet is the present auditorium, not including the stage or the closets? And I think the answer to that is around 2,000 square feet in this room. Can we build a room large enough to house two pickleball courts? Can we have a ceiling that would avoid low hanging lighting or things? But again, that's part of the point here, right? Is if we understand what we're designing the spaces for, then we need to design the spaces to accommodate the priorities, right? And so part of what we're trying to gather are, what are the program offerings that we want to try to accommodate that best represent what the citizens want? And then decide how big, how many, and then obviously, they need to be able to accommodate whatever the needs are for those programs. Does that make sense? Okay, the next one is, my preference is for the senior center continue being program-driven. I don't think there's enough demand among West U residents to be a social center, I think is what that says. The next one is, please provide statistics for class participation for fiscal year 2023. I presume that means for the programs that are currently being offered, and what happens to the oak trees in front? I think for the first one, I don't have that information, but I'm assuming that information is available or could be made available. In terms of the oak trees in front, we haven't designed anything, so we don't know what we're doing to the trees that measure. But we know the trees are very valuable here, and we do what we tend to not to say that. The next one is, some great activities are only offered once or a few times a year, so my answer has to be rarely. I'm worried that my answer works negatively on some great activities and events. Survey design is suboptimal. The next one is, I want to be sure that you hear from those of us who are very excited about the new civic center. And I look forward to having new spaces that are updated with better acoustics and technology and much expanded programming. The next one is, we need a larger space for pickleball. There is, there is great benefit to us both physically and psychologically. We have many players participating, sometimes 30 at a time when only one court. We need more courts, exclamation point. Perhaps a second floor of the building. We need gathering spaces, place to drop in, indoor basketball, volleyball, which also could be three pickleball courts. The next point is, can you please provide and publish data of current use of buildings, library, community center, senior center, programs, et cetera? I'm already amazed that the number of programs, and would like to see that continue. The next one is, currently, the senior center is 9,485 square feet, and the library is 5,564 square feet. Please confirm that future spaces will be equal slash more efficient, and hopefully more for both. So the planning assumption is that both facilities will be somewhat larger than they currently are. Again, what is that square footage is the most, more important question, is are we providing you useful programming space? Or are we providing you space that you're just not going to get used very much? So, but they are both currently being planned to be bigger than they are today. Libraries are heard in many communities, and something, and something could be as well. We need a multi-generational approach to the new library community center. Please, please have space for clean pickleball. Four exclamation points. Sometimes there is as many as 25 or more people in the multipurpose rooms. Make the new community center similar to River Oaks Club feel. How about grand piano to organize musical concerts, art lectures, themed events? Make building look like a university campus feel, matching current West U downtown feel with antique feel. Invite them. Lots of green trees, oak trees, fountains, oak trees, oak trees. Include more youth and events. Check out urban feel of current cafe. Tiny. Love their atmosphere. Are there any other questions? There are some others that were turned in that I think are more related to other topics for other meetings. So we're going to defer those to another meeting. This one is, could we do pottery classes or jewelry-making, candle or soap-drying fabric sewing classes? I realize that there's a cost of entry higher for some of these than others. Any chance for a basketball court, older folks play too? Anybody need new comment cards? So the question is, is what is the overlap of this project with the scout house? I think that right now, we're trying to understand what programming requirements are. And there might be a different conversation with the city about allocating programs in different places to use existing buildings with the new facilities. That's a different conversation. But right now, what we're trying to do is understand what are the, what are the programs that make the most sense for the new projects? And then if there's other programs that make more sense in other current facilities, then that could be a different conversation. So the question was, all the common information about volleyball, basketball, and pickleball, surely that relates more to the rec center? I would say yes and no. There's a lot of senior facilities that are catered to activities that seniors have priority for, that if at a rec center, they tend to be, tend to be more used by younger folks, which usually puts pressure on seniors to not have as much use of those facilities. So I think that that's what we want to sort of understand, so that the policymakers and the program deciders can decide how to best accommodate the needs and the wants of the community to be other companies. Sure. So the question is, is that one of the challenges with the existing facility is that this room is used for almost everything? And that setup time and take-down time for one activity, the other program time, it requires more staff to do it, and it's a lot of effort to do that. And that's exactly true, right? We want, that's why we want to really study what are the kinds of spaces that can best accommodate the amount of types of programs that you want. Because based on the answer to that, we will decide what kind of spaces make the most sense. Is it a room like this? Does it provide more flexibility? Or is it more like a classroom space? Or a place that's more of an open area? And we don't know that until we try to understand what programs we're talking about. And then we'll start testing what are the best ways to do that against the amount of programs that the city wants to offer in those spaces. So can I read these first, and then I'll come back? If you want a comment card, maybe you can write it down. So here's a comment. An auditorium should have acoustics for concerts, no fans hanging down. Acoustic engineers should be retained to do this. I would agree with that. Auditorium should also have good PA speaker system. Current setup is lousy, and other reason to hire it. I agree with that, too. This one is, may people over 50 bring guests under 50? That's an operational question that I can't answer. For example, an adult bringing a parent to an exercise class. Can this be more intergenerational, but some concern about noise from children disturbing older users? Can some activities, walking, et cetera, be outdoors? Can this be called the community center instead of senior center? And not post of milk and cookies or some other local food service? Basketball, exclamation point. I would say that the name of the facility that you have is, I think, is inherited over multiple generations. I think there probably would be a new name for the facility branded somehow. Most communities do that. We visited a couple of this last week. They're all branded them to be able to represent what they want that to be. I would assume that West U might do the same thing and have a different name for the facility. This one is, West U or Bel Airers, is that the pickleball main location? I'm not sure what that means.
They're talking about the rest.
Oh, oh, the West U, Bel Air, okay. Is that the pickleball main location? Another question, would you like more pickleball indoor and outdoor courts if available? More regulation on pickleball games, themes, and skill levels. Periods of drills offered, be surface ceilings very high with no obstacles. More lessons with various pros. The next one is, leave meeting space, quiet reading space, and library. Children's area separated for noise purposes. West U has few available meeting spaces right now. Library would be a perfect place for this. Would love some joint community space between the library and the senior center. And I think that's, you know, one of the opportunities with this project is to look and see what kind of synergies the library spaces and the senior community center spaces could have. So you aren't duplicating spaces. You can use them maybe differently than you're currently using them. And all of that is, you know, going to be decided by what you want these programs to be, then we can look at what the options are. Can I read through the rest of these first? I'll let you.
I will, yeah. This one will be able to more people or only?
The survey? So we haven't discussed that. We wanted to sort of see what kind of turnout, which I'm very excited about the turnout here, so I think.
The other survey was done by more people, correct?
Correct, it was.
Is there going to be like a, some way to get more?
We'll discuss that with, if we can. The question was, will this, the survey of activities be broader task in order to get a broader input? I think that's the thought process. Okay, keep scale of spaces intimate. This is a busy.
It's one of the pluses.
Oh, this is a big plus of the current space. Be careful with senior children, activities not.
Like the hen's seat.
Hen's seat, yeah, okay. Build a pickleball. A pickleball. Possibility with the youth, with the youth edition?
Still, pickleball positivity, they're kind of the young old ones. Which, which other projects would not be feel?
Okay. So the question is, does your product provide some broader appeal to pickleball? So the question is, is to provide some broader appeal to pickleball. We have more generations that are starting to play than before. This one is, "What activities can be done at the West U rep center? Pickleball, basketball, volleyball, et cetera." Again, I think that this information we get for demand is going to be very helpful for the city to sort of help evaluate. I know the city has, you know, surveyed before, but I think this is the right time to also look at how you're using the other facilities as well. "Can the building be a community center that happens to post a library and senior activities rather than naming them separately? Mix the generations together. How about space for outdoor gathering?" Again, I think that what the ultimate name of the facility is, I'm not going to be the one that decides that. That'll be you guys and the city staff, but I think if we get their use right and we get the programming right, the name will naturally be the right name. Did I finish your piece first? I've got a few more. Was adding a second floor to the existing senior center ever discussed? Why is tearing down the building necessary? I think I can answer that one. So this building is not designed to have a second floor over it, so basically we would have to tear it down to the ground, replace the foundations in order to be able to raise it up. So basically you're doing the same thing by replacing. The next one is, "So what is the priority of accommodating pickleball? It sounds like, it sounds like there's a lot of pickleball players in town. Sounds like the city is choosing to demolish historic structure and spend millions to build some sort of pickleball facility." This one, I think, is a comment to make sure that we include special help for hard of hearing speakers. Hopefully not talking about me. Okay, any other questions about programs in this building? Yes? I, I am aware of it, yes. Well, I think we, we want to use this information to add on to that information and add on to the previous surveys. We want to take a holistic look at this and not just rely upon existing, because what happens is, and I think that your rec center is a great example of what happens that we see in all communities is that once there's a facility that is provided that better aligns with the community's priorities and their uses, the use will go up. And that we want to make sure, and that happened with your rec center, that's happened with almost every other facility that we have done. We visited some senior centers, they told us the same thing. In some cases, their use doubled based on from whether they were to when they opened up the new facility. So again, I think that's, you would think that would be natural that if there's a facility that better addresses or offers programs that you didn't offer before, or maybe didn't know they were offered, and now you do because it's brought attention to it, that more people will try it out and maybe stick with it because it's better for you and it's easier to do that. So I would expect the same thing to happen here. I, I'm going to let someone else answer what you're currently using to pull your apart for. The question was, is to what, are there places that pull your apart for, or there used to be places that pull your apart for other programs? I think that, I think, I think we probably would now fall into, if we look at the overall requirements and then maybe see that maybe there's other places that that program might be better offered. Is that the right way to do that? Yes, sir? Yes, I don't. Yeah, I don't have a slide here, but that slot, that information is on your city website. There's a project schedule. We showed it at the last, at the last meeting, I know it was on the screen, but if you, it's the same schedule as on the city's website. It shows exactly what we're doing, exactly when we're meeting the citizens, exactly when we're meeting with city council, trying to be able to show all the touchpoints of different places that we want to get feedback about what we're doing to make sure we're on track with it. And there are a number of touchpoints that have been designed into this project in order to go get feedback, because our approach to design is not to give you what worked at Bel Air or at Sugar Land or at wherever, right? Our approach is to design a West U facility that accommodates, the West U that accommodates the West U values and we will design it a custom facility for you based on what you tell us and what you want and what you afford. So that is how we approach projects and we will do our best to make sure that it accommodates the biggest. Here's as we can, how much there's, we have a lot of space, we have a limited budget that has been allocated, but I think that there will be choices that we'll have to make. And then we go through the design process, we don't have to communicate those choices. We'll say, here's, you know, what we looked at, here's what we thought we could accommodate and why. And now what we typically do when we do the site is we give multiple options. We don't just say, oh, we liked it, this is the answer. That's not what we do. And we look at different things, what it is, what if we did that? And then we'll see feedback, both in these kind of town halls, also at county little workshops, and also with city staff. And so we will keep doing that until we get it right. Obviously there's a point in time where we have to, you know, decide where we've done it. But we've got a lot of time, but paying here for design, so we have to get it right. And that's my amendment to the city is that we will do what we have to do to do right. So we won't stop. We look at options because, you know, whatever, we'll, we'll figure out how to make it work. So can I read these first? "I hate to lose the built century architecture of the library." So just a fun fact, I, I've never designed a building, but it is. And another comment was, "Please make the survey available to more people to get better grounded responses." Is there another one? Okay, this one was, this is not our program, but it's asking about our agreement. I think that's online as well. It's available. Yeah, the question is, "How much should we be in the design and solve?" So I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it is, and it's a year. Two such things, it's 980, no.
Excuse me, I missed the last meeting, but I understand you want all this input to help you design the new building.
What was on, on that press base? This question is, "Were you also survey county users, city of age, I guess, say, I guess users of libraries, these meetings mostly armed with West U residents? Need input from surrounding areas." I mean, I think that's really a question that we need to tell us if they want us to listen to. Right now it's focused on West U residents. Surveying involved is the city library encouraging this? So we have been meeting with the library team. We've been meeting with the head of the Paris County Library District to talk about what their needs are for the project as well. We'll continue to meet with them to figure out what the right answer is, obviously.
Take the public works, that's down on Milton, you know, you're a bit offsite, right?
Correct.
And until that site is ready, the public works, keeps working.
Correct.
Until they get moved up there, so a little bit of disruption.
Correct.
Similarly for this building and the library and the fire station. As that new building put together for the senior center and the library, these two existing.
Hopefully, the former should be able to provide a facility and project that we want. So thank you for it.